Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No ma'am.
Okay, next up is superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford, will you please present? Oh, hold on a second.
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks of the school board, the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Mrs. Radford, thank you.
Thank you Chair Seberg. Good evening to other members of the board and good evening to everyone that has joined us tonight. I am very pleased to stand before you to share a few spotlights and if you all want to join me down front. Thank you. Tonight we'll start with our Manassas City Public Schools Spelling Bee information. We want to offer congratulations to a very special third grader. I know he's here tonight, so I'm going to ask him to come forward and then I'll tell you a little bit about what he did. Third grader Kayden Jacobs, are you here? Standing tall, come on, go around here. Kayden recently claimed the title of MCPS Division Spelling Bee Champion. Congratulations to him. I had the privilege of attending the spelling bee and I'm telling you, it was intense. I think all of us in the crowd were more nervous than the students on the stage. It was crazy. But it boiled down to the last two words and Kayden's two words, retinitis pigmentosa, I think. Oh, retinitis, excuse me, peninto- okay, I got it, pigmentosa. Don't ask me to spell it, right? Well, I will let you know that that is a rare inherited degenerative eye disease that causes severe vision impairment. And then his final or the bonus word was tetrazini. So I believe some of you have eaten that before, but he did that with flying colors. As the winner for his school and also as the division winner, Kayden has qualified to go to the Prince William County Regional Bee, which will be held March the 12th at Garfield High School. We want to give a shout out to the judges, the parents and the coaches who helped Kayden and all of our students study more than 400 words crafted by the Scripps National Spelling Bee Organization. And by the way, this year's National Bee I believe will be held at the National Harbor in Maryland, so we hope to see Kayden there. Congratulations to you Kayden. Sarah Weaver is also here. She's the coordinator of elective instruction. I'm going to ask her to come because she helped coordinate all the bees. And I believe his mom is here, so you can come on up and she's one of our wonderful MCPS employees.
Are you hoping he doesn't fail tonight?
No. I asked him if he was hoping he was going to fail tonight and he said no. Okay, well on to our high school. Our Osborne High School is excellent all the time, but I want to highlight three specific students. Did you know there is a high school bowling league in our area? I didn't either. The league has been active for nearly 30 years. When it launched in the western end of Prince William County in the fall of 1995. The eastern end started in the spring of 1999. There are no qualifying requirements. All students from both Prince William County and area high schools can participate. All receive scholarship money which is administered by the SMART program through the United States Bowling Congress. Tonight, we have three Osborne students who participated in the league. As I call your names, I would like for you to come forward. Liam Palmer, Kayden West, and Tyler Trivett. These young people signed up on their own and not only did they participate in 12 weeks of bowling, they won first place out of 21 teams. Each of them has received a $250 scholarship for winning. And so we'd like to say thanks to youth director Robin Leonard for working with all the students and for sharing this amazing spotlight with us. Robin, are you here tonight? Wasn't sure if she was going to be able to make it. But we will share the league's contact information with Osborne in case other students who enjoy bowling would like to follow in the footsteps of Liam, Kayden, and Tyler. So congratulations and go Eagles. As you know, February is Black History Month and here's another spotlight from Osborne High School. Dr. Karen Wallace, social studies teacher at Osborne, is here to share how her African-American history class recognized black history this month. Dr. Wallace.
So, thank you Chair Seberg for inviting me tonight to discuss what we planned and implemented during African-American History Month. My students had to complete three projects this month or over the month of January. They had to make a children's book, which we read to the students at Baldwin today from K to four. They had to create either a TED Talk, a one pager or a poem about someone influential in African-American history. They also created posters to hang around the school and they also made trivia for the school. So there was a competition. You could post in school if you knew the answer to a question. And then we also have some other highlights. So why we celebrate Black History Month? It's a time to honor the contributions and legacy of African-Americans across U.S. history and society from activists and civil rights pioneers to leaders and politics, science, culture and more. When I started writing the African-American history course, I did not want to start it in 16, 19 or in slavery or in a painful era. So the kids learn about Africa first and how they're descendants of kings and queens and then we go through all the history, all the way to the contemporary era. So how we celebrated? We designed posters, children's books, poems, one pagers, created the trivia questions. We had two important guests and thank you Dr. Newman for being one of them. And the other was Mayor Davis Younger. The students read their ABC books today at Baldwin. We were in several classrooms. And I want a special shout out to Mrs. Smith. I read to her class and I gifted her class a book about Langston Hughes. And we also visited an art factory and we went on two field trips, one to Planet Word and one to the African-American History Museum. So this is our trip to the art factory. Jordan Exum at the art factory, she's a curator. She had us come in and we looked at different types of art. And we saw an artist on display, Dr. Yomonja Smalls. This is when Mayor Younger came to class and she talked about how she was the first African-American and woman to serve as mayor of Manassas and she let the kids do a Q and A with her. This is our trip to Planet Word. They love the museum. We're getting ready to talk about the Harlem Renaissance. So it was talking about language and how words have evolved. And what we learned is that teenage girls have come up with the most words. So everyone thought Shakespeare came up with a lot of words, but it's actually teenage girls. We also went to the African-American History Museum. We're doing a project currently on the lived experiences of African-Americans during the world wars. So this gave them an opportunity to take pictures and gather stories for that project. And this is today, when we were guest readers at Baldwin. So we went K through four. And they either read children's books that they picked out from my library in my classroom or they presented their own books. And I just wanted to remind everyone, black history is American history. So I hope one day we won't have to have a separate class for African-American history and it will actually be integrated into the curriculum. So a people without knowledge of their history and culture is like a tree without roots and that's from Marcus Garvey. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you to Dr. Wallace for sharing about all the great experiences and activities that our students at Osborne participated in during Black History Month. I know that many others in across our school division celebrated in many other ways and so we just want to acknowledge them as well. And thank you all for your time during our spotlights and announcements.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. We don't have any board committee reports this evening, so we'll move on to citizens' comments. And if there's anyone that would like to make a comment to the board, there's a sign up sheet right up front. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time that you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. And up first I have Susan Bledsoe.
My name is Susan Bledsoe of 8916 Portner Avenue. Our family has called Manassas home since 1882. We are now seven generations here. My dad was scout master of troop number one here in Manassas in the early 1930s, but I digress. School board members and all of you attendees, punches. I'm here to tell all of you about an opportunity for your input into the education of our next generation of Manassas citizens. This is a volunteer program called P-A-S-S, PASS. It's a nationwide federal program called Partners Alliance for Safer Schools, PASS. I personally experienced being a PASS volunteer during the 10 years that we lived over in Martinsburg, West Virginia. And the program was quite popular there. Volunteers were from among college students, retirees, veterans, or stay-at-home parents. The requirement being a half hour once a week for the school year. Reading from their website, I quote, "PASS volunteers provide academic," excuse me, "and student support to students on a one-on-one ongoing basis, generally 30 minutes per week." Research shows that ongoing personal involvement enhances the education of students as they progress through the educational system and impacts their decision to remain in school. A PASS volunteer may assist a student with a particular area of study or spend time talking with a student in an effort to provide encouragement and support." End quote. The motto of PASS is destination graduation. I've been in touch with Dr. Thomas recently regarding the PASS program and she felt that it was a worthy endeavor for the city schools to investigate and to undertake by August perhaps. At our meeting yesterday, we were both excited and enthusiastic about initiating this volunteer support for the children of our community. Don't you love that word, community? When you say it slowly, com-unity, com-unity. Let's do it. Yes, to show up weekly and build a relationship with that one individual student would certainly impact that life for the better. Showing that someone cares about them and their goals, listening, encouraging, supporting that one. Do be a difference maker by showing that you care. We do have a veritable army of moms and grandmoms available here in the city. A large untapped resource of helps for the schoolchildren here that those ladies want very much to see succeed.
Ms. Bledsoe?
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Julie Steinbach.
All right, hello. I've been watching you guys from home. I want to thank Ms. Russia for hosting that information meeting on Saturday. That's the kind of engagement that I know a lot of parents would like to have. It is very much welcomed and it's definitely a good model to follow. Listening for the, you know, last two meetings, accountability, that is something that we need in our schools. And we have to address accountability for any plans or curriculum to work. This would be behavioral and academic accountability. I heard Mr. Giffeller, I believe, if that was him, talking about STEM scopes. I just wanted to say, you know, or I should say, he stressed the importance of hands-on learning and experiments. I asked my daughter Caroline, she's at Mayfield, I asked, you know, are you doing this in class? And she said no. And the reason was, she's only done one experiment in the classroom because the teacher is having to deal with disruptive students in the class who will not allow for experiments to be done. The teacher is having to focus on these students, cannot teach. Great curriculum, but if you can't hold the kids accountable, how will that work? Sebastian, who's my oldest, he's at George Mason right now, his senior year, he took cybersecurity under the governor's STEM and project Lead the Way. He had to teach himself cybersecurity because his teacher was always dealing with the problem, students and their behavior, which was not allowing him to learn. My daughter, Virginia, who is sophomore at Osborne right now, now she has ADHD. She needs a special pass because the stress level goes up because of these students who are disruptive in class. She cannot concentrate. She cannot do her work. She cannot hear the teacher. She sits up in the front. But she needs that pass to leave the classroom, okay? Because she needs to focus on her studies. She wants to learn. Now, if kids are not held to the standards of conduct or academic performance, then how can teachers teach? Students can't learn and that's not fair for the students who want to learn. Blaming the state or the national standards, blaming a test turns a blind eye to other districts that do not have this problem. And it also teaches our students to not look at themselves and blame someone or something else. Accountability should start with the board and it will take work and leadership. And you do need to be held accountable. So do the students, so do the teachers, and so do the principals. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Jevanese Haley.
Good evening. I'm back today to make another comment because I want to make sure our division leaders understand what is happening at the school level so we can work together for a better student and teacher experience. In the real world, we hire for skills and fire for behaviors. This was a message that was resonated loud and clear at a recent Cagan training that I attended. We know this is the reality, yet my experience as a parent and teacher is that in general, we are failing to prioritize the need for discipline and appropriate behaviors, so the learning environment suffers and it feels chaotic and dysfunctional at times. We are removing the element of the productive struggle from our children's experiences which robs them of the opportunity to develop perseverance and problem-solving skills. Incentives, fun and rewards are wonderful and meaningful when they are structured properly and earned. But rewards for the sake of rewards promote entitlement and produce a false sense of achievement which leads to students being confused about the real work it takes to be successful and productive citizens in our community. I am not alone in my stance that I am concerned about the quality and the substance of the education my child and others are receiving. The quality of education and overall morale decreases dramatically without supportive and firm discipline. Teacher retention suffers and the student experience is compromised. Some of the best teaching and learning that I have experienced has taken place in environments that have disciplined structures that work and a willingness to acknowledge and act when strategies need to change. I continue to express the need for us to do things differently if we expect to get different results. And this work is too important for me to remain quiet and act like everything is okay when it is not because I see things that are counterproductive to my child and others. And I know there is more that we can do because where there is a will, there is a way forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to present citizens' comments? Okay, moving along. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks of the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. First up on our discussion agenda this evening is the Equity and Education Proclamation. I'll go to Vice Chair Stevens for this.
Thank you Chair. The school board of the city of Manassas recognizes the month of March 2024 as VSBA, Virginia School Board Association Equity and Education Month and supports educational equity, best practices and programming opportunities for all students. I'm going to read the proclamation. Maker, that was me. The Virginia School Boards Association has declared March as Equity and Education Month and encouraged school boards across the Commonwealth to adopt an Equity and Education Proclamation. Whereas, the board, individual board members will endeavor to be explicit and proactive in promoting diversity, inclusion and racial equity in Manassas City Public Schools. And, whereas, the Manassas City Public Schools is committed to creating an inclusive, safe, caring and challenging learning environment viewed through an equity lens. And, whereas, it is important for Manassas City Public Schools' families, students, teachers and school administrators to be aware of the diverse needs of learners and to encourage discussion of the challenges as a school community. And, whereas, the school board establishes goals for schools as guidance to promote the equitable distribution of division resources and opportunities. And, whereas, in July 2020, a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Task Force, including subcommittees, was established to serve as an advisory committee of the school board and to make recommendations regarding the equitable allocation of the division's resources among the schools and continues its work. Whereas, anti-racism and diversity, equity and inclusion policies and a comprehensive plan have been developed to ensure high-quality, unbiased educational opportunities for all students. And, whereas, Manassas City Public Schools will recruit, hire, develop and retain highly, high-quality racially, linguistically and culturally responsive personnel. And, whereas, the school board continues to be aggressively committed to equity and in education and creating a climate and curriculum where all students receive the resources needed to graduate prepared for success after high school. And, whereas, the school board must be intentional in providing the appropriate supports, removing barriers, creating needed learning environments, closing current gaps in the opportunity to ensure equitable opportunities for students. Whereas, the school board affirms that providing an equitable education for every student is the city's most valuable mechanism for reducing poverty, addressing racial disparity, building a thriving community and driving economic advancement for its citizens. Therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the city of Manassas recognizes the month of March 2024 as Equity and Education Month and supports educational equity, best practices and programming opportunities for all students.
Thank you Vice Chair. Any questions or comments from the board about the importance of equity in education? Okay, well, this will move forward to next month at our first meeting for a vote and then we will have our proclamation if that's what is voted on. Thank you. Next up regarding student achievement, Mr. Craig Giffeller, Executive Director of Student Achievement, will share information regarding the Virginia Department Achievement, will share information regarding the Virginia Department of Education's in-person flexible instructional time guidelines and team.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Tonight, I want to inform you about the new guidelines issued by the Virginia Department of Education regarding in-person flexible instructional time. The guidelines were issued on January 29th and were meant to address attendance coding questions related to flexible instructional approaches that school divisions are considering to help close learning gaps. MCPS has been providing additional instructional opportunities to support all of our students and their academic needs using classroom instruction methods outside of the normal school hours. The email that contained the new guidelines clarifies the standard to the code necessary to the code attendance for flexible in-person instructional time. This type of flexible instructional time is also called meaningful engagement and can also be used to help support students who miss instruction during the normal school day. The Department of Education has suggested that this is an additional way to support the All In Virginia Initiative, and we believe it is in the best interest of our students and our division to follow these guidelines, given the extensive amount of out-of-school instructional programming support that we provide our students to address learning gaps. This option was discussed extensively among the superintendent, key division staff, all principals, and was concluded that it would align with our existing programming to support our students. Our approach to working with students emphasizes the importance of all-day, everyday attendance by supporting the learning happening in school. That has not changed since the institution of our programs in the fall, and these guidelines do not change that commitment. It is important to note that the standard for the flexible in-person instructional time is much higher than the standard of the pandemic meaningful interaction described by the VDOE in 2020. To meet this standard, this in-person flexible instructional time standard, the school division must ensure the following: be taught by a licensed teacher; the flexible instructional time must be in-person; cannot exceed the per-pupil-to-teacher requirements outlined in the standards of quality; and a student must be engaged in instruction tied to the Virginia content standards that is consistent with the curriculum that the student has either missed during the regular school day or areas in which the student is struggling. Interactions and engagement between the teacher and the student are consistent with the regular school day classroom interactions. And lastly, it must be outside the normal school hours before school or after school or on a Saturday. So if a student attends flexible in-person instructional time outside the normal school hours, school divisions will be able, be permitted to adjust the chronic absenteeism rate on the end of the year through the Student Record Collection, the SRC, provided that the following conditions are met. First, a K-5 elementary student must attend two hours of flexible in-person instructional time, and a 6-12 secondary student must attend three hours of in-person flexible time to reduce the traditional day absence by one day in the chronic absenteeism calculation. A student may attend as many flexible instructional hours outside the normal school day as needed to ensure that the learning loss is mitigated. However, only 15 days of flexible instructional time may be coded for the attendance for each student on the end-of-the-year Student Record Collection. When a student is absent for the entire day, they must be marked absent. The Virginia Department of Education will continue to collect the aggregate days present and aggregate days absent on the end-of-the-year Student Record Collection. Actual student absences will not be changed. The state will adjust the total days absent number that is used for the chronic absenteeism calculations. No class absences are impacted with these new guidelines. So, schools have responsibilities. The schools must track when students are attending flexible in-person instructional time outside the normal school day, and principals will certify those tracked hours. So for each session, teachers will complete a flexible instructional time coding rubric. The principals will sign off on the rubric each session and maintain copies at the school that will be reviewed by myself, by Dr. Brent. School staff will also log the attendance of each instructional, flexible instructional time session for every student to include the number of hours, the teacher, and the content addressed. And at the end of the school year, principals will sign a certification form indicating the law, that the log is accurately reflects the flexible instructional time that meets the criteria outlined by the Virginia Department of Education. And so, the next steps. The next steps, principals have already received the coding rubric. They've received the school-specific log for recording student participation in the qualifying instructional time opportunities. And the schools are identifying those students. They've already identified those students. They've relooked at the students that are currently attending their after-school and before-school programs. And to make sure that the correct students are being invited to the programs and that they are participating in the flexible time that it qualifies based on the regulations. I do want to stress that the MCPS has not developed a new program based on this guidance, nor is this a replacement for regular in-school instruction and attendance. At the K-8 level, before-school and after-school programs began in October, in November. At the high school, there are after-school programs opportunities in addition to the Saturday Learning Seminar. These programs are designed to support students with specific academic challenges. And once the guiding, the guidance regarding the connection to absenteeism was received, schools looked to see if there were additional students that we should invite. And in most instances, students with excessive absences were already participating in these programs. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Mr. Giffeller?
Sure, I'll go first. Thank you for that presentation. So, so a couple of questions, because I felt like this, on the, on the surface, to me, this feels like additional work, additional time for teachers, and what is the impact of this really going to be? But you just shared with us that a lot, and I do realize, a lot already is happening in the schools and have been happening in the schools.
Yes.
So perhaps there's an opportunity for credit because of what we have been doing.
Correct.
So you, and you just answered one of my questions. It start, I've looked everywhere, couldn't find it. We were, schools were informed about this in January. I wasn't quite sure how, how recent that was, so.
January 29th.
So I'm not gonna, so that, answer that question. Do you see that this particular program will? I, is it the intent to have additional in-person opportunities for people above and beyond what's happening already?
So, schools have designed the after-school, before-school programs already, and we don't anticipate expanding on those. We currently have over 1,000 students that were invited to attend our after-school, before-school, and Saturday Learning Seminar. So we have a very high number of students who have been inviting and who have been attending. Attending, obviously, that the attendance of those programs fluctuates, but we invited over 1,000 students, and I don't anticipate expanding on that at this time.
Okay. And so, really, what you're telling me, because there's, we're not anticipating an increase of what we're already doing, there will be no budget impacts?
There is not, no. The, the cost will, these guidelines do not impact the, our budget at all. We had already budgeted for after-school and before-school programs, and so we're already paying teachers. We started paying teachers in the fall to work with students before school, after school, on Saturdays, and so I don't see that changing at all.
Okay. And I, and are these funds allocated from the per-pupil funding, supported by All In Virginia?
They're not funded through the All In Virginia because we are using the All In Virginia money for FY25 and FY26. These funding, funding mechanisms are coming through a variety of resources, through our operating budget, but also through Title I funding for our elementary schools. And so, there's a variety of ways. And we look at and we budget for that per-pupil allocation for each of the schools for before-school, after-school programs. We've had them, I can only speak to, since I've been here, we've had after-school and before-school programs for the last three years. And so, we, we take into consideration every year when we develop school budgets.
Okay. And then, do me a favor and define in-person for me, because I just read the definition of in-person, and I just want to clarify exactly what that means to us in this particular initiative.
So, in-person is a student sitting in front of a teacher face-to-face?
Okay. Okay. Because I know that definition changes depending upon what I'm looking at.
Yes.
And then, one more question. All right, so we just reviewed a revision of our 2022 education proclamation, Equity in Education proclamation. And so, I just want to make sure you, you've spoken quite a bit about invitation. If a student would like to participate in this opportunity without being invited, they may, correct?
Correct. We don't turn kids away.
Okay.
But we, yep.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Anyone else? Mrs. Spall.
Hi, Mr. Giffeller.
Hello.
I guess I just want to say, you know, that I'm happy, frustrated, and proud to hear about this new program or existing program. You know, I'm happy and proud to hear that it's already happening and that this is just kind of solidifying what we've already known needed to happen. I think I'm frustrated because I, as a school board member, can sit here and tell you, like many of us can, I think I know the winning formula to teaching a kid. You know, if we have 15 to 19 kids in a class, we have teachers that are paid well, you know, we can make it happen. We can make it happen all day, every day. And I want everyone out there that may be watching or listening or, or viewing us right now to know that. We know how to do this job. But, you know, I guess this looks to me like a backdoor way to making it happen. And, you know, what we're doing is, by hook or by crook, we're paying teachers for before and after care, and they are putting, you know, their faces in front of our kids and, and they're, and they're doing it. It's just, it's not the way that I would like to see it, but I commend you for figuring it out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Breschow.
Sorry. Thank you for that presentation. I've never quite figured out where to put this microphone. So, we received this guidance on January 29th, 2024, but this is applying, this can only apply after that rubric has been issued and the logging has begun. This is not going to be retroactive to the fall when we started these tutoring programs.
No, it is retroactive to the fall.
It is retroactive to the fall.
As long as, as long as the sessions that we engaged in, starting in October, for example, as long as they meet the criteria, then we can apply this to that. So the students who were attending a fall session at a school and it meets all the criteria outlined, that student can be given credit for that time.
Right. One of my concerns that we had previously had an opportunity to discuss was, you know, you said, "We don't turn a student away if, you know, they're seeking that extra help," which is great. Our Saturday Learning Seminar, you know, when people get a chance to visit, is a wonderful oppor, mix of kids who are catching up on work, but who are also just taking the opportunity to go deeper into subjects that they really like. And I wouldn't want any of those extra opportunities to turn into a rubric-driven, you know, checkbox-driven kind of exercise. This is still going to be open to enrichment if that's what kids want to do, correct? These opportunities?
Yeah, the, the programs that we have developed, the after-school programs that we started in the fall, were really tailored based on the needs of our students, which is what we want. This, this guidelines, these guidelines that we received had no impact on our program development, and they will not have a, an impact on how we develop and how we work with kids.
And it's the, I, so the idea is that it does not, if you are, if you attend Saturday Learning Seminar and you're there for homework help, it does not fit the rubric. You cannot get credit for that. But if you are there to catch up on a lesson that you missed, instructional time, you do get credit for.
Correct.
Correct. I also have a question about the student-teacher ratio. I just want to verify, the student-teacher ratio for a standard class can be pretty big, 20-something kids for a single teacher. And if you are trying to catch up a group of 20 kids who missed different parts of the lessons, that can be difficult. What ratio are we currently operating at?
I don't know the specific ratio, but I can tell you, in our after-school and before-school programs are very small. It's all based on a small group. The SOQs are designed to be what would be in a regular classroom. In our primary grades, grades K through 3, it's 1 to 22. It's 1 to 28 after that. We, we have very small numbers in our after-school and before-school programs. Everything is done in small group.
Okay, so, our kids are having an opportunity, not just to receive extra instruction, but a very high-quality version of that.
Correct.
Extra instruction. So, that's very good to hear. My final set of concerns, which, you know, the word accountability was used earlier in the meeting today. Accountability is driven in part by the incentives that are embedded in whatever structure you are setting up. And so, my very first reaction when I saw this presentation was, I don't know if I really like the set of incentives that this designs. So, but I am comforted by the fact that the individual absences are still on the students' records.
Correct.
And please confirm for me, do students still receive the attendance care plan, you know, the, the various attendance interventions that we have outlined? This does not, if they start attending on Saturday seminars, their contact with the attendance office doesn't go away, does it?
Does not, no. The attendance protocols we have in place remain in place. This is simply a way to get credit for students that are attending programs. We don't advertise this as a way to make up, miss a class, we're gonna make it up here. This is all about tailoring it to the needs of students' academic needs.
Okay. Well, thank you for your awareness of the, your awareness of all the potential pitfalls on this and for taking the time to, you know, consider this thoughtfully and to, you know, provide the thoughtful answers to our questions. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Giffeller. So, quick couple questions. Was there, so what came from the VDOE was really a directive? This is what we want you to do? Was there, was there a funding mechanism to this?
There's no funding.
Okay.
There's no funding mechanism to this. We already had our programs in place.
Okay. All right. So I was just, I was kind of hopeful that there would be some funding to go along with it, because you know how I feel about unfunded mandates. So, when we were looking for the students to participate, were, how were they chosen? How were they identified?
So, principals worked with teachers to look at a variety of, of data points, looking at their student achievement data, looking at, you know, if they have been absent frequently. I mean, just a variety, but looking at each child individually to determine whether or not this would be a good program to have that child in. And so, you know, we, we identified, they, the schools identified large numbers of students and invited them back in the fall. And then, since this guidance has come out, we also relooked at that. And, and I think that they did a really good job identifying students in the fall because their numbers didn't go up significantly for the spring.
So, is there an expectation on each student to attend X number of sessions or per week, per month? Is there an expectation there?
I mean, there's an expectation for students who have been invited that they would attend because they need to, they have learning gaps. And so, we have, I know there are principals who have worked with students who have not attended as regularly as they need to, and they really work with those students and their families to get them to those programs.
So, for the before-school and after-school especially, how does transportation work?
So, for the after-school programs, we provide transportation for the schools that are doing after-school, before-school. Those are, parents drop their students off in the morning. We did look into providing morning transportation, but because of the timing of the bus routes, that's very difficult. So, the two schools that are doing before-school are Hayden and Round, which are late, are late-to-start schools.
So, if we have students who don't go to Round or Hayden, are they unable to participate in before-school?
The other schools do not have, are not offering before-school programs, they're only offering after-school programs.
Okay. And then, for example, for the before-school or after-school, what does it look like? Is there a curriculum that's being followed? Do those teachers have lesson plans? Are they communicating with that child's classroom teacher to be able to identify where that student needs support? Or does it look more like a tutoring situation?
It looks more like a tutoring situation, although we have, we use many of our resources that we already have in place. So, for example, at the elementary school, we have Imagine Learning and Literacy, which is a computer-based program, that students do some time on that and then circle and rotate to an in-person, small-group reading group. And, and they give, get direct reading instruction based on their individual needs. And there is clar, there is communication between the, the person delivering the after-school or before-school program and the classroom teachers.
So, it's really not, so I'm just trying to picture in my head. So, it's really not where you have a student who's missed a week of school, they come into the before-school or after-school, and they are getting that lesson retaught. This is more tutoring to build up their skills. They're still going to have to get that material from the classroom, like, let's say they miss an assessment. They wouldn't take it through the before-school or after-school. They would still have to find a time.
Correct. Yeah, the after-school, before-school instruction tutoring is targeted specifically for that learning gap for that individual student.
Okay. So it's based more on learning gap than on specific, like, unit or lesson?
Correct.
Okay. And I know I had, now, how are, I think- Um, and I know I had, now, how are, I think that may be all. Let me just double-check. Okay. Um, I think that may be all my questions for you. I may have more later, but that's okay. So, thank you. I appreciate this.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffeler and team, for the presentation and all the information. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Before we go on to the highlight of our agenda, I'd like to introduce or acknowledge that Manassas Education Association representatives are in the audience, Ms. Jenny Higginbotham and Ms. Anna DiMaria. Thank you for being with us. So, under New Business, the Superintendent's FY twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget will be presented. Dr. Casada.
All right. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, school board members, and Dr. Newman. It's my pleasure and privilege to present to you tonight the Superintendent's Proposed Budget for FY twenty-five. Before I start, I want to be sure to recognize the work of Lee Miller, our Budget Supervisor, who's right here. She's definitely the one who did the heavy lifting and the development of the budget. I appreciate her hard work and her patience with me as I came into the finance world just three short weeks ago. I would also like to express appreciation to Mr. Hawkins for the work he has done in the past and for the work he did to get the FY twenty-five budget started before he left for Arlington. So, this budget is designed to be in alignment with our strategic plan because that lays out our vision, mission, and commitments to our students and our community. The budget is how we bring our strategic plan to life. So, the MCPS vision of each graduate being prepared to maximize their potential as a member of the global community requires support and resources, beginning in pre-K and kindergarten, and carrying through elementary, intermediate, middle, and high school. Our mission states that we're the architects of achievement. In order to be the architects, we have to provide the structure, learning environment, and resources needed to empower our students to reach their potential and our division goals. And we do that with our dollars. So, our budget is also the way we embodied our, embody the beliefs that are adopted in the strategic plan. You will see in this budget a strong commitment to the belief that all Manassas City Public Schools employees are educators, as well as the belief that excellence in education is paramount to the success, not just of the schools, but to the city of Manassas. Later on in the presentation, you will see that some of our new investments are connected to one or more of the pillars of, in our strategic plan. And each one of these pillars is critical to the success of MCPS. All right. So, as background, Virginia Code requires that each year, every superintendent in Virginia must develop a needs-based budget that is balanced. Superintendent proposes this budget first to the local school board for approval and then to the local governing body. Our budgets are dependent upon the revenue received from multiple sources, but primarily from the state and the city. The state revenue for this proposed budget is based on the governor's proposed budget that was unveiled in December. Now, the state budget is not finalized. We recall this from last year where it took quite a long time. Currently, the state senate and house are working to recognize, reconcile their own budget proposals. And once that happens, the budget will go back to governor for, the governor for consideration and further reconciliation. If you recall, the state did not adopt the budget until this past fall for this year. Hopefully, things this year will move more quickly for us. The governor's budget does not include state funding for a targeted salary increase for FY twenty-five, but instead, funding a one-time bonus. However, the composite index, which measures a locality's ability to pay, did change favorably for MCPS, bringing in, um, additional funds, as did the fact that the Virginia Retirement System, or VRS, rates went down overall for most of the VRS groups. The initial budget versions from the House and Senate both include salary increases and both would yield significantly more money for MCPS. This budget will be amended once the final state budget is approved. And again, I wish I could tell you when exactly that would be. Before we get to dollars, it's important to provide some context about MCPS that impact our budget. This slide just shows us some fast facts about MCPS. Speaking of these fast facts, I'm excited to share that MCPS is also publishing a Budget Highlights flyer, hold on, hot off the presses, that you will get tonight and will be published online, that summarizes some of the key aspects of our budget. I would like to take a moment now to express my appreciation for Amber Galavie's Ballard in Communications for her excellent work on the flyer up until, like, four o'clock this afternoon. The flyer will soon also be available in Spanish, and that, both versions will be published on the website. Um, as I just said, the English version of the flyer will be published tomorrow, along with this presentation on the MCPS budget website. And that page will continue to be updated throughout the budget process with more detailed materials. So, you can see on this slide some demographic information about MCPS. Close to seventy percent of our students are Hispanic, as most of us know, and over half are English learners. Um, it's also important for us to notice that the vast majority of our positions, our employee positions, ninety percent, are located in our schools, our school-based positions. And another thing to highlight, um, because not everybody does this, is that MCPS provides all of our students with free breakfast and lunch, which is one way we live out our strategic pillars of culture of caring and strong family and community partnerships. And is that commitment to equity that we were talking about earlier. Okay. This next slide shows you some enrollment history in MCPS over time by level. So, you know what you're looking at. These stacked bars allow you to see how enrollment has changed at the elementary level, which are the gold, the gold section of the bars, intermediate, which is the dark blue, middle, which is the turquoise, and high school, which is teal or light green, depending on what your screen looks like or what printer, um, those are, at those different levels. You can see how those, um, numbers have fluctuated over time. Next, this slide shows the enrollment of our English learners over time, broken down by whether the students are active, those receiving services, or commonly referred to Level One through Four, um, and are, and are former English learners. You can see that the number of our active English learners in Levels One through Four is higher than it has ever been. Okay, more fun with charts. This slide provides us information that's included in the Washington Area Boards of Education Report, or referred to as the WABE Guide, or WABE Guide, depending on how you say it. It shows us the cost per pupil for many of the Northern Virginia jurisdictions. Um, you can see in here that Manassas City, whereas above Manassas Park and nearly identical to Prince William County Schools in terms of the per-pupil funding, published for FY twenty-four, since that's the most recent that's available. Um, and then you can see the other surrounding jurisdictions. These are all of the jurisdictions that are part of the WABE report. This was extracted from that report. Speaking of extracting things from reports, the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, commonly referred to as J-LARK, um, does annual studies to show how Virginia compares to other states in areas such as state taxes and spending, education, health, and transportation. So, the next two slides show us information from that report relative to Virginia per-pupil funding for education. I'm not going to bore you with the rest of the report. This slide shows us that Virginia school divisions receive less funding per student than the overall average for fifty states. It shows us, this is looking at just the state funding component. So, you can see that Virginia was thirty-sixth in per-pupil funding in the last time they calculated this, with six, six thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars per student, less than the average of eight thousand four hundred seventy-one. I do have to say that Virginia funding is trending upward at a higher rate than the nation, however. Okay, so now, this one, that was just the state component of, of funding. When you look on this next slide, it shows the per-pupil funding comparisons when state and local funding are combined. On this metric, Virginia was twenty-fifth, so like the median, with fourteen thousand three dollars, but below the fifty-state average, um, of fifteen thousand three hundred thirteen. It's important to note that these studies lag behind the current-year funding and are designed to help legislators as they're making their decisions. Um, the state senate and house budget proposals mention attempts to address some of the J-LARK recommendations from the past few years, but we'll see where that lands. Now that we have our background covered, we can dive into the budget itself. This slide describes the development process for the FY twenty-five, um, budget. First, principals and directors reviewed their FY twenty-four budgets to determine any new needs for FY twenty-five. Just like when we are looking at achievement areas, a needs assessment is critical as we develop, um, subsequent budgets. So, then, requests for anything additional were first submitted to cabinet members for their review. And all requests were required to be justified and aligned with strategic priorities and/or federal and state mandates. Cabinet members then submitted items for official consideration, and then, based on our priorities and available revenue, items were approved for inclusion in the FY twenty-five proposed budget. What I can tell you is that Dr. Newman made it extremely clear from the outset that the focus for our FY twenty-five budget was on improving compensation for employees. So, as a result, very few additional things were included in the, in the FY twenty-five budget. What I can also tell you is that we didn't make cuts to existing services. All right, more fun with charts, different ones this time. This slide allows us to look at where our operating budget funding is coming from and how it is being spent. We'll first look at revenues. So, the vast majority of our revenue comes from state aid, which is forty-nine percent, and the city transfer, which is forty-three percent, with seven percent coming from the state through sales tax revenue and the other one percent coming from other sources. So, that's what you see on the left. And then, on the right, you see the breakdown of our operating fund expenditures in terms of categories. That's in the pie chart. You can see that over three-quarters of the expenditures are for instruction, with another seven percent for maintenance and operations, seven percent for a combination of administration and, uh, student services functions like attendance and health, five-point-six percent for technology, four percent for transportation, and, um, a few other ancillary things. All right. This slide allows us to look at our entire budget. So, you will see that the operating fund, um, is in bold, and that's what we're discussing tonight, but there are other funds. And not shown here is the Food Services Fund, which is its own self-sustaining fund, or Capital Improvement Plan Funds. So, that would be just too much to put in one place. So, you can see that our revenue and expenditures are included here for FY twenty-four, as well as FY twenty-five. And then, you can see the change, both in dollars and the percent change. Um, you can see that state revenue has increased by eight-point-six percent, and city revenue has increased by four-point-two percent. It's really important to note the sidebar that's on here, um, and that the city council increased the FY twenty-four transfer to MCPS in January by seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in order to support the jointly-approved pay increases for teachers. That increase is included in that FY twenty-four column you see on this chart. And then, in FY twenty-five, the city transfer includes a one-point-five-million-dollar commitment from the city council that is earmarked to further support salary increases for teachers. That is on top of the projected and typical annual three-percent increase that we get, um, from the city, which is also included in that increase. You can also see on here that federal grant monies have increased slightly, and the Debt Service Fund has increased also. And you see here on the top, you see the revenue, and then you see the expenditures, and because of the requirement by law, you see that those numbers balance. For us nerds, that's really important. Anyway, the remainder of the presentation delves into some, some of the components of the FY twenty-five proposed budget. This slide gives us some high-level highlights on both the revenue and expenditure, expenditure sides. In terms of revenue, we have about eight-point-four million dollars in revenue increases that include all-in Virginia funding that MCPS will be accessing for the first time in FY twenty-five. In fact, you just heard Mr. Gaffeler mention that. That funding at the state level covered FY twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, but divisions have the option to start pulling down the money in FY twenty-four or, or wait till FY twenty-five. Um, we chose to start with FY twenty-five to align it with our budget process, 'cause the FY twenty-four part came in mid-year. Also, the revenue increase, as I mentioned, was bolstered by that one-point-five-million-dollar increase from the city council to support teacher salary increases. So, what are we spending it on? So, over five million dollars of this new revenue is used to be, to, I'm sorry, is being used to address compensation. I will provide more detail, uh, shortly. In addition, MCPS is going to be spending approximately one million additional dollars in, um, the employer contribution to health insurance premiums as a result of an over-ten-percent increase in health insurance rates. The goal is to try to reduce the burden on employees of those raised increases to, um, the extent possible. Beyond the spending of, on compensation, budget increases include two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand dollars in additional strategic investments that aren't tied to compensation, as well as, um, about fifty-five-thousand dollars in supplemental pay increases for coaches and extra pay duties to make those stipends more competitive and commensurate with surrounding jurisdictions. As I keep saying, the primary focus of the FY twenty-five budget and the increased revenue is on enhancing employee compensation, so we can make salaries more regionally competitive. Um, this includes making our overall salary increases, plus adjustments to salary scales and supplemental pay. And again, another increase to the budget is related to health insurance rates, as I mentioned. On the next several slides, we're going to discuss these strategic investments that are connected to the various strategic plan pillars. So, this first one is the Inclusive and Collaborative Learning Environment pillar. And some of our key investments, again, most of these are focused on new investments, um, that are connected to this pillar, including, include adding another technology support position to support elementary schools, um, moving an existing instructional facilitator from, at the high school, from grant funding to the operating budget as the grant that was being used to, to fund that ends. Additional funding for ESOL instructional materials for our students, support for our translators in terms of professional association memberships, and our continued implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. For the Culture of Caring, um, pillar, here are some, um, some new strategic investments. One is moving certified nursing assistants, um, or CNAs, from grant funding to the operating budget in order to sustain those positions. These are existing positions, but we're needing to put them into the operating fund so they become, um, more permanent. And there are four of those. Increasing resources for our employee assistance program and adding an additional security position for Metz Middle School. As I, again, keep saying, the bulk of our investments fall under quality workforce. The next two slides detail our compensation increases. This slide focuses specifically, focuses specifically on teachers. So, teachers are going to receive a minimum of a six-percent salary increase effective July first, on top of the four-percent increase that was effective January first. So, all eligible teachers, so those not at the top of the scale at Step Thirty, receive this six-percent increase. Adjustments have also been made to the scale itself to address how we were lagging behind Prince William County Public Schools. First, the initial steps on the scale, so one through four, which have been the same, are now differentiated. So, each one of those steps, um, is different. And then, second, some analyses that were conducted showed that the earlier part of our scale, Steps One through Eleven, were far behind the Prince William County scale. So, additional adjustments and revenue, um, were made to enhance that part of the scale. As a result, teachers in that range of the scale will receive up to a seven-and-a-half-percent increase. All of these changes, um, will mean that teacher salaries will be over ten-percent higher on July first of twenty-twenty-four than they were on July first of twenty-twenty-three, when you combine this new budget plus the increases that were done in January. All right. This slide focuses on the remainder of employees. Um, all employees will receive a minimum of a six-percent increase effective July first, on top of the three-percent increase that was effective in January. All eligible employees, again, those not at the top of the scale, will receive that six-percent increase. I should have noted on the last slide, and will note here, that the scale itself did adjust, so people at Step Thirty do get, um, a market-scale increase. Adjustments were also made to, um, some places on the scales to address how we're lagging behind Prince William County. Um, first, initial steps for, of the support scale, One, Two, and Three, are now differentiated rather than being the same. And then, second, where bus dri, while bus driver salaries have been adjusted in recent years, the upper half of the scale was the same, um, meaning Steps Sixteen through Thirty were literally the same rate of pay. This proposed budget differentiates each of those steps for bus drivers. And again, all of these changes mean that employee salaries will be over nine-percent higher on July first, twenty-twenty-four, than they were on July first, twenty-twenty-three. And as I mentioned a few slides ago, um, we also made adjustments to compensation for coaches and other staff members who take on extra duties, for those to be more competitive with surrounding jurisdictions. And likewise, an adjustment's been made to the supplement for the testing coordinator at the middle school in light of the volume of testing that occurs at those grade levels. Finally, we have some strategic investments that fall best under the heading of Align Foundational Supports. So, the budget includes funding to support an intern working in the procurement office in connection with our work-based learning efforts, um, at the high school. Um, we have some increases in government health insurance fees, and then, I mentioned before, health insurance rate increases. Um, and then, also, we have recruitment software that helps streamline the communication with potential candidates. This last content slide shows the timeline for the adoption of the FY twenty-five budget. Tonight, we have this budget presentation. On Thursday, there's a budget work session that is focused mainly on compensation, health insurance, salary scales, position allocations, and along with our five-year forecast, so lots of numbers. Um, on March twelfth, there's the opportunity for public input through a public hearing that will occur on the same evening as your regular business meeting. And then, there's a second work session on the budget on March nineteenth, um, in advance of when the school board will adopt the budget on March twenty-first. All of this happens, and then, the school board will present the budget to the city council on April third. Of course, should the state funding situation change, we will amend the budget and bring everything back to the school board to amend the approved budget. Oh, I went too far. Okay. Thank you all so much for your time and attention, as well to everyone's patience with me, patience with me as I join the finance team. As I mentioned earlier, this presentation and the new budget flyer will be available tomorrow on the MCPS budget website. And materials from the Thursday work session will be posted on that site on Friday after that meeting. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Casada and Ms. Miller. Thank you very much. We're going to have plenty of time to be discussing this and asking questions at our work sessions coming up, but if there are any burning questions or statements, then we will take that at this time. Seeing, hearing none? We're good to go. Thank you, Dr. Casada.
Thank you.
Moving along to our action agenda, Ms. Sarah Brezha has a motion for us.
Yes, thank you. Let me, I'm sorry, pull up the, what I'm reading here. So, if it's okay, I'll read the resolution first, and then we can, and then I'll make the motion.
Sure.
Uh, so, the resolution that we are considering, we discussed last month, last, all right, at our last- regular meeting, this is resolution number R two oh two four dash oh three. Whereas the Manassas City School Board seeks strong family and community partnerships as part of its 2027 strategic plan, and whereas the Manassas City School Board has set improve attendance as a priority as presented to the city council on June twenty-ninth, 2023, and whereas the Manassas City School Board has authority to issue guidance to the division superintendent in accordance with these goals, therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Manassas directs the division superintendent to prepare and present a brief summary of attendance data for the previous month at the final regular meeting of each month during the school year, beginning the month following approval of this motion. The summary shall present data by school and shall provide a comparison to the corresponding data from the previous year. We discussed it last meeting, so now I make the motion that the school board of the city of the, of Manassas approve resolution R two oh two four dash oh three, recurring monthly attendance reports.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Breja, seconded by Mrs. Williams, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve resolution R two zero two four dash oh three, recurring monthly attendance report. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the resolution number two, R two oh two four dash oh three, until the first meeting in August.
I have a motion by Mrs. Spall to...
Postpone the resolution.
Postpone the resolution.
Number two oh two four.
R two oh two four dash three.
Until the first meeting in August.
Sir, a second.
Sir, a second.
I have a motion, and a sec, a motion by Mrs. Spall, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that we postpone resolution R two oh two four dash oh three until first meeting in August. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Question, question.
Mrs. Williams.
Postponing the vote until then, is that correct? Or postponing the... Yes, I see you shaking your head, yes. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. The purpose for postponing the vote?
Yes, I was going to go over that. My reasons are as follows. This deferral relates to the time of year we're in right now versus how close it is to the end of the school year, and the fact that the end-of-the-year attendance report analysis are forthcoming for consideration by this board. Also, it relates to the fact that monthly attendance reports are already highlighted in our monthly board updates by school, and it anticipates that this motion will be more fruitfully discussed over the summer, when we'll be in a better position to review attendance data and work this request into our overall vision for the district for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Any other discussion?
I, may I just add one more thing?
Okay, we've already spoken. I'm going to speak, and then you can speak again.
Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. I don't know why we would postpone this, postpone a vote. We've discussed it at length at a previous meeting. We're discussing it tonight, and we've spent a lot of time discussing this, and if we were going to postpone it to discuss at a later time, I'm not sure what's going to change between now and then. Yes, we'll have updated figures, but we'll have updated figures anyway. Mrs. Williams?
I, I agree with you. I was just going to point out, I, I do think it is important for this board to receive more public reports on attendance. That's what we're talking about. That's why we're not fully accredited in some of our schools. And just Friday, we were federally identified for two of our schools, and I, chronic absenteeism was part of that identification. So I think it is important that this board is fully aware, and, and I really appreciate the presentation. Perhaps waiting for the monthly reports until after August, does that make sense? But I agree, I think we should vote tonight.
Mrs. Breja?
Unless you want to clarify.
I have two, so I have two clarifying points to make. So I just want to make sure I understand what is the question that you are asking, which is, well, first of all, the motion has been made and seconded that it's postponed, so that needs to be considered first, and then we can go back to the motion itself, which would put this monthly recurring report requirement into effect as of March 2024, next month. So just so everybody's clear on the order, and I wasn't sure the question that you were asking in terms of...
What the, what Mrs. Spall's motion was to just postpone this vote altogether, correct?
Well, postpone it to a specific time. So she would like to, from what I understand from the comment that she made, was to postpone it until August, the first meeting in, our first regular meeting in August. And it is, and now this is the second thing I wanted to say, so I can say this as well. Part of my understanding of wanting to do this was because it would give us an opportunity to consider perhaps a larger package of how we want to present certain data to the public. It would give us, you know, once we let this school year close out, that we would be able to see those numbers come in and then take that with us as we consider, you know, okay, do we want attendance data? Do we want something else with that? Do we want none of these things, both of these things? I think when I was addressing this with Ms. Spall, that she was hoping to put this into a larger conversation. And even though it is obviously, the motion that I made and the outcome that I had originally wanted was to start this in March of 2024, I'm actually, you know, very enthusiastic myself about plugging this into a larger strategic vision and giving us that opportunity to consider it for starting the next school year. So even though it might be a little counterintuitive, I am planning to vote in support of Ms. Spall's. I'm so sorry. Motion to delay, you know, my, it is my hope that we can use this opportunity to work together as a team and perhaps, you know, jump into a new school year fresh to make these, you know, decisions and discussions about how we want to present ourselves, you know, next school year.
I clearly understand. Thank you for that. That really, that detailed exactly what the two of you are trying to do, so I appreciate that.
Chair. Mrs. Spall had her hand up.
I just, I mean, just in the spirit of transparency, I'm seeking compromise, and so that's what this is intended to do.
Vice Chair?
Just a couple of things. I feel very unprepared for this new motion. I wasn't made aware of it until about four o'clock this afternoon, so I haven't had time to think about the ramifications of what it would be and what people are looking to discuss later on. I just need to get that statement out there, that I was told about this through a text message. So I haven't had time to really think through what kind of discussions or conversations there would be, or what this would include, or what direction anyone is going in. My second question is really a general question. Making attendance reports public monthly, how will that improve student attendance? Because that's our goal. Our goal is to improve student attendance, and merely reporting our numbers on student attendance, what kind of impact will that have? I think we really need to think that through before we say we want these numbers to be available monthly. So I'm, I'm, I'm in a conundrum quandary, not sure how I'm going to vote, what I'm going to vote for.
Dr. Newman, did you have something you wanted to add?
Vice Chair, I was also just made aware of this, but I just want everyone to know the board and everyone out there, that regardless of what the vote is, we will continue to do what we promised, Ms. Breja. We'll get the information to the board through the monthly meetings until it becomes a vote on when it goes out publicly in a meeting, if that helps the board.
And Dr. Newman, would you further clarify that whenever a school's presenting to us, will they be including an attendance report with context?
Yes, we will add that to our reports that are going forward, but I just don't want anyone to think that we're going to hold data from our school board. We're going to get it to them monthly, just as we promised.
And...
We...
Sorry.
I had a conversation with Ms. Breja about this, and helped her pick the second meeting of the month. So this is not a surprise to us of what's being asked. Again, starting in August is fine with us, but until then, we will make sure that you have the information.
Ms. Breja, you have something else?
I would like to add to, I definitely respect the quandary that Ms. Stevens is in, and I want just to make sure that it's noted on the record that this was, that was shared pretty contemporaneously with the time in which it was come up with. There was some personal things going on that made this a fairly late-breaking development. So if, there was no conscious effort to exclude any, you know, anybody from this discussion, and discussion should happen on the dais, just kind of in general, but I wanted to provide some reassurance on that. I also noted your question about, your doubts about attend, you know, sharing these numbers monthly, what impact would it have? And I would note that it would be great if we could discuss that. It would be, that's a good reason to vote in favor of Ms. Spall's motion to consider this at the start of the, for the, for the start of the next school year.
I, I fully understand where you're coming from. I'm not prepared to vote on Ms. Spall's consideration, because I really would like to have time to think about it and process it, because I got it via text as I was taking my child to and from swim prac, to swim practice, making sure she had dinner, making sure she got there on time, making sure she had everything she needed. So I don't feel like I'm prepared to vote on that.
Now, Dr. Newman, how long has it been that we've been getting monthly updates on attendance? Would you say it's been, has it been since the pandemic? I know you started reporting...
We were giving department reports. Attendance wasn't always in it, but I know since my conversation with Ms. Breja, it was in the last one. I'll have to go back and see how regular it has been there. It's been in there, but hasn't been a regular one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so this is what we're going to do. The motion we have before us at the moment is to postpone the vote on our 2024 oh three until the first regular meeting in August. So if you vote yes, it will be postponed, and we will discuss it again later and vote on it later, if we were going to do this or not. If, if you vote no, and majority rules, but the noes would take it back to the original primary motion, where we would vote on, make that decision now, if this is going to be a part of our meetings or not. So is everybody clear on that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I have a motion by Mrs. Spall, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that we postpone the vote on our 2024 oh three until the first meeting in August. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I have Spall, Williams, Brooks, and Breja. All there up on card, too? Any opposed? Raise your hand, please.
I'm going to abstain, because I would like to have time to process.
Okay.
Because a lot was discussed and brought into that motion, and I would like to have the opportunity to read the language.
Okay. So the motion carries. It's Spall, Williams, Brooks, Breja, and Hollingsworth. Seberg votes no, and Stevens is...
Abstained.
Abstained. So we'll look forward to discussing this some more in the fall, or in the August. All right. Next up is school board members' comments, and I'll go first to Mrs., Ms. Bland.
Good evening, everyone. To start off my comments tonight, I would like to extend my congratulations to the Osborne Student Bowling Team. I would also like to say congratulations to our MCPS Spelling Bee winner. These are both very big accomplishments, so congrats to all of them. Please join us at the Osborne High School Orchestra Concert this Thursday at 7:00 PM in the auditorium, and as well as our art show at the Manassas Museum at 6:00 PM on Friday evening. Lastly, thank you to Dr. Wallace for your presentation on Black History Month. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Bland. Mrs. Spall?
Yes, I would like to say how proud I am of also all the people that Ms. Bland mentioned, but the three young bowlers for seeking out opportunities for their own fulfillment and representing Osborne. I also would like to say that I think that some of the things that have been discussed this evening, like pass, sound like a wonderful and promising opportunity for many of our students who need, you know, a lot, maybe more parenting help than what they're getting right now, and I like what I heard about that. I'd also like to say that discipline is an area that we are closely looking at, and when ideas begin to flow for addressing discipline needs, I hope those who spoke tonight will back us up with word and deed, and potentially, you know, additional tax burden as we try to address it. I want to thank the board for working together to consider my motion to defer this evening or postpone. While it might seem like a small thing, we're trying new techniques to work through the best outcomes for our students and schools, and I do believe that this is an exciting step forward. And in addition to the consideration that we have added to our summer plate, I'm also excited to see some new marketing strategies, which I've been pushing for to come to light in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to congratulate everyone, recognize this evening, and thank you, Ms. Wallace, for your Black History presentation, and just echo that sentiment that Black History is American history. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Breja?
Thank you very much. Congratulations, of course, to the Spelling Bee winner and our OHS bowlers. And to Dr. Wallace, I want to give a special thanks, because when I ask my child every day, when she comes home from kindergarten at Baldwin Elementary, "How was your day? Did you do anything exciting?" She says, "No, nothing." But now I can see from your presentation that she got actually a very enriching experience, so thank you for cross-pollinating and for having that idea to take your older kids and bringing them, bringing them and their experiences and what they've learned to the younger kids, on behalf of myself as a parent and my child, who is learning a lot despite her reticence to share it with me. I want to thank Dr. Casada and the finance team for making, for this new era in our budget presentation, our new era in budget materials. I'm excited to see, I will be excited to have these items posted on our public bud, public budget website, and I look forward to the input that the public will be able to give to us so that we can run a more responsive school system. I'm very excited about all of that. I'm excited, of course, to discuss it with my fellow board members. I want to thank everybody who came to my outreach event on Saturday. We had a great discussion. I learned a lot from the people who were there, and I hope that people learned a little bit from me as well. As a reminder, I am hosting a second session tomorrow, Wednesday, February 28th, at 5:30 PM. So if you'd like more information, more conversation, and would like to meet another, have an opportunity to meet other Manassas City families, I hope to see you there. And finally, I echo Ms. Spall's sentiment. I want to thank the board for their respectful consideration of my, of my motion, of Ms. Spall's motion, and of entering this new era together. It is a governance team, after all, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Breja. Mrs. Williams?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Team it is. I echo all my, everybody who just spoke. The spotlights are always exciting. That's the best part of the meeting, in my view. I want to definitely thank Dr. Casada and her entire team. This has been an intense process, especially when we added in all the compensation changes. So I appreciate everybody's hard work, and now we've got a lot of work to do this month, and I'm looking forward to the work together. The only really thing I'd like to add tonight is I want to remind our seniors to please check the website for scholarships. There are so many scholarships available. There are many scholarships available, even if you're not going to college. Please check it out. You don't, minimum, I think we've even seen some scholarships available at two point...
a two-point-five GPA. You don't have to have a four-point-plus GPA to earn a scholarship. So please, please, check, check the website. I think it's incredibly important, because don't leave money on the table. I don't recall the number last year, but it was over three million dollars of scholarships our Manassas City Public School students received. And that is all I have tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. I, of course, also want to congratulate our bowlers. That's just very amazing that they took that upon themselves to, to find their little niche and have something that they could enjoy. And of course, our Spelling Bee winner, because we all know that spelling can have some different rules in English. Doesn't follow it all the time. Also, I very much enjoyed Dr. Wallace sharing with us how she has been working with her students in her class, and all of the, you know, exciting things she's helping them to develop, and also that, you know, how that, you know, this is Black History Month, and we're celebrating, you know, that part of history that is our history, but also that now going into March, we are going to have equity in education, and that's just, you know, piggybacking on how important it is that all of our students receive what they need at their level. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I have to say, the person who won the Spelling Bee is a third grader.
Mm-hmm.
So a third grader can probably spell better than the entirety of this board put together, and he did it all without, without spell check. So that's mind-bogglingly impressive, and if you've ever seen the words on the Scripps Spelling Bee, they are words that none of us can define. So way to go, Kayden. I think we're going to be well represented at the Greater Prince William County Spelling Bee. I hope to be able to attend. And I wanted to mention something about Black History Month. Black History Month is almost over, but we can still learn about the contributions and roles Black Americans played and continue to play in the tapestry that makes up our nation. Black history is our history, it's what made us a country. And finally, I want to thank the governance team, I want to thank the cabinet, I want to thank Dr. Casada for putting the focus on compensation for all our employees, because all of our employees are educators. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll close out with my comments. First, I wanted to echo what Ms. Bland mentioned. On this Friday, March first, is, at six PM, is the opening of the Art Expressions exhibit at Manassas Museum. This exhibit features the work of Osborne students, and it is the eleventh annual collaborative exhibit. We thank the Manassas Museum for hosting and for their partnership in this event. My congratulations goes out to Dr. Wallace, too. I asked her to come and present, and it's hard getting students here on a weeknight, but she did awesome representing them, and I have been able to, I've been fortunate enough to be in her classroom and to be on some of her field trips that have been just outstanding. And I must say that the students are all very well behaved. I want to give everybody notice about Manassas Reads. It will be Saturday, May eleventh, from nine to twelve at Harris Pavilion. If anybody out in the community has books they would like to donate, we're collecting them at every school and at central office. A note about spring break, it's coming up the week of March twenty-fifth, and you know what that's a good time for? It's a really good time to plan your yard work and summer camps. So to do that, Osborne High School Athletics is having a mulch sale. It's open to all Manassas City residents, but you must have your order into the office by April tenth. Delivery to your home will be on Saturday, April thirteenth. It's four seventy-five a bag, three cubic feet, and there's a ten-bag minimum order. Look for the flyer on Osborne website or on social media, print the flyer, complete it, and send it in with your check before April tenth. Camps, I started noticing that there's some camps that are going to be coming together. In May, there's going to be a field hockey camp in June. There's many camps serving a variety of age groups. There's cheer camp, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and volleyball. So watch for those notices and sign your kid up, keep them busy this summer. And I am also want to share my excitement for the budget this year. Thank you to the budget team and Dr. Casada for presenting tonight, and we look forward to the remaining part of the process. Thank you very much.
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section two dot two dash three seven one one, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended for the following purposes: Discussions of superintendent's mid-year evaluation; Discussion of personnel matter, P E R S twenty-three twenty-four dash zero three seven two; And two dot two dash three seven one one, part A, paragraph eight of the Code of Virginia is amended for the following purpose: Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific matters legally, matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mr. Hollingsworth. That the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section two point two dash three seven one one, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended for the following purposes: Discussion of superintendent's mid-year evaluation; Discussion of personnel matter, P E R S twenty-three twenty-four oh three seven two; And two point two dash three seven one one, part A, paragraph eight of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, is amended for the following purpose: Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. We're in closed session. Thank you.